You know what, boyah baba wa, baba o tumba ni, boyah baba wa, o guri bidoni baba o kori, eh, anybody like you know what, eh, madam soya kori be, eh, e kosi mon, te bafet, kabaye kolo wo, boyah fe kolo wo le, ne fe kolo wa shone, ne fe kolo wo mato ni, edara ko moa wa media wo, eh, awa media wo, media ad, sorry, our media, Yoruba World Media, eh, eh, ola wa she da da, oda be pe, ah, ripo lo ya la ti lo vai. Baba ro kore se wa kuluwa. Engineer, ah, o we nipo lo wa, lo do ombe. Engineer. Well, I'm actually follow what it is, eh, Jacky wa fi, eh, Jacky, eh, sister, me soya kori be, eh, ba wa fe baba wa, baba o tumba, eh, ba wa ki, eh, ba wa de, eh, ba wa be wa wa no, o ri eto, so that, ah, one let you be, I want to buy a concrete, eh, she go ni. Eh, ka bo, sa ya fi aso koi ki baba wa, onori o kotwa kasa, baba ba ba, baba to mo yomo, baba to gisogo, akini, eh, ka bo, ay kuwa tuwa ki, awa mo ni, ola ola ni, eh, miya gu, wa la baro, olo ro, eh, ka bo, eh, miya mo ni, eh, ni soya kori be, ah, mobo ya, ni, i come eh di, meta, si ya koko fe ba bobo, omo yo ba, nation worldwide so, eh, ka bo sa, eh, she bo dupe. Eh, she, eh, she go ni, eh, ma binu baba wa, eh, ka bo, sorry eto, o poto di vi te baba wa maso, eh, Jacka losi o do baba wa o tumba, eh, kung bobo, awa media, eh, ba e sha manoa, ni le lo kona yudi, eh, Jacky baba o tumba, ah, olo ma bi ah, o baba wa le, hmm, eh, she go ni.
Eh, she olutu, eh, she, eh, my honourable vice chairman, eh, Dr. Sadi, eh, kale, kushetakun takun, moki bobo, eh, inti, eh, wa ni orijoku, eh, mokoko ve pi aso kui, dupe lo wo, ah, wa ba ba wa, iluki wa koma ni uluri, ko possible, eh, putet one hundred, oha, be, ashin uluri, me, ti o join, ni ni wa kati, in continuing, no, fubu, awa media presentas, ni aleni la ti, pe, ama welcome, ah, wa ino pataki, si, ah, you wa, ah, wa pataki, no, de di pe, ah, uluri para wata, ah, uluri oko, go 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 go, si, our conference, there will be small advice, a la di efmo, eh, ah, oni number one, eh, the main national leader of Yoruba, eh, nation, eh, professor Banji Akitie, mofito, moto wa, mofi, eh, dark coin, mude, eh, welcome, he sa, eh, ka bo, sorry eto.
Eh, kuwa ju.
She sa, then eh, is also a pleasure, eh, usually, eh, riki, ti present, ba losi, na wa losi di kon, vice, ki sabateli, but our fair change di so many things, eh, is also my pleasure to welcome the national deputy, eh, chairman, Yoruba Sub-Determination Movement, eh, Alaga, she, eh, doctor, professor, in bracket, Banji Ayilogi, eh, kale sa.
Moki, moki ni o, eh, kuwa ju. Eh, she. Eh, ka bo, eh, ka bo, baba.
Ah, I also want to recognize, I want two other invited, eh, guests, si baba ma mu lo wa, three, di, bi two weeks ago, la ti bere, sister miye, I want ti, di wa baba loso di, ah, ma mu, ah, wa advisors, I want likely, who to ma je kwanama, sister baba, mba da ba, ba di wa ni, ah, ba la li di mari, eh, ti, ah, ma ma fuini, eh, everything to ma wa, amai into this one si, eh, one of the other person we are spending tonight, eh, Mrs. Zonitiri, but then we also have Mrs. Bola, Bol, eh, si Bola Cool, ah, be. Baba patai, eh, ju, eh, eh, help me be.
Eh, eh.
Eh, 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 kale ma, eh, kali, you need to.
Eh, ka bo.
Eh, kale sa.
Eh, she.
She sa.
Eh, ni keni mi ro kanti di be tombe di, ma, I think to this one, si gubu enti wa lujoku, eh, eh, di wa ni, ori apen pa ba, it looks like, eh, many people are looking at you, and not only looking at you, they are admiring you and, eh, all the eminent, eh, leaders, si ya kuda ni, eh, she, so, ma, palasi odi oda wa, ah, wa, si si wa, ah, madam wa, professional media presentas wa, la ti be kon continue, eh, let me hand over back to, eh, my deputy, I have reasons why I'm seeing my deputy because eh, eh, we cap, maybe you know, gili, maybe you know, we, oh, oh, we koli re kon, so, ah, model leni, oda eto representi, eh, the Yoruba World Media Presenters, Dr. Sadi, over to you.
Ah, baba, eh, she like me for me yo, moro fe, akini sa, akini bobo, le, le, yo, kokon baba, pro, moki ni sa, ori kule ni mo, ma fi di buki, eh, kale o ba mi, eh.
Eh, she.
Eh, ba, eh, ke, baba le, ki ti ba wa bi, eh, ki ti, no, ma fi, eh, di ake, mi fi ke.
Eh, eh, eh.
Eh, kale o ba mi, sa la fe, eh, wa.
Eh, she, eh, she.
Moki wo go ne, para wata, o ba, eh, di awo, ah, para wata, eh, di awo le, mi, mi o malare, eh, ah, wa, jo malare, ah, wa malare, ah, wa mo, shaka olo mo, hmm, eh, she go ni, eh, kui da ra ko mo wa, eh, de kui fo mo ni, eh, she baba, kuni suyikoni rey, eh, baba mi, Banji no, la ti America, moki ni sa o, eh, kale sa, eh, she, eh, she sa, eh, iru ni ma ma, posini, ah, ba la lo wo, lo ro ni, eh, koni, eh, ta ba wa, solo di otiti uni, baba, eh, iboni, ki, kaka ti bere no, eh, baba, baba wa la ti America, eh, ma deka, oko bele, eh, di aki baba, koma re la ti no, kofe ma re la si, eh, you re la si, eh, ma fe, no so do, baba wa la ti America, baba, Banji la ti America, eh, ki le di, la ti ba wa so, so, eh, o fe ki baba, yo, la ali me di, ome pe, baba zia wa, everybody ma, ma ju e pe, ki na, o fe koleni baba la le, ah, ni, kote gori, o ni ya, o ko, puwa sofu, ah, ni aleni, ah, refit, ah, wa le le, koni e ma go, toko mo yo ba, to ma ba le si, o ni, o fe wa sofu, ah, lo di otiti uni, adu pe lo do lo, now, over to you sa.
Eh, she, eh, eh, me segments, me di, ni te ni, lo domi, shubwa ele, ita kofe she, iba ba lo ma bere.
Okay.
Eh, ma, ma ni, kajaki baba, konskoto ri mo ba, wa wasele ni.
Okay.
Eh, eh.
Okay, baba, over to you sa, oda be pe, everybody, baba o tumba go, ah, wa yale, o fe pe, you see, ya ti para, so, no, pro, pro.
Eh, 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 kushena.
Yes, sir.
Eh, 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 mokfe, na ni le ti, di ta fi bere, eh, to ta besi, she la to se, keta, ah, ah, be la ti last week, last, last Wednesday.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Eh, eh, di ti, ashi fe she, ni, pe, afekia, omo yo ba maru, iru, orile di ti, ah, fe da si le, eh, go go wa la ma Nigeria, ah, demo pe, ah, isanla, ne Nigeria aghe, ah, fe, eh, kwai, isanya, losi, eh, si, eh, orile di ti wa, ne le o duwa, ola ma ge, ah, ola, antifua wa yo Yoruba ne, o ye kupo, oda antifua la, omo ni ya, ah, omo, kupo, toni o ye ye, kupo, kupo, eh, kanta fe lo ni, ni la ti che to, eh, country ti wa, ta fe da si le, eh, eh, ti Nigeria is a country without, eh, da, that rejects knowledge, eh, country, eh, le, ti, ah, fe da si le, eh, bi, to di a pe, imo, imo, la fi ma ma, she joba, eh, kishé, iru eti Nigeria, to di a pe, ole la mu da, da, wa nu, go pe kwa la ma, she minister, eh, iru, eh, iru niya o le, shalanle o duwa o, eh, eh, di, eh, ni ya ti, ah, fi so pe, wa da wa politicians, wa de, ndabi pe, ona fe, di ma wa, o kala ko, no wa na de, wa, so pe, amba le, amba, eh, eh, ileni le, wa na, lo to, ah, la, ileni na, ah, ni le me di, ah, wa yo ba, ileni kasyo shuna la ni, shubwa ta, kato di pe, wa ko ro, Nigeria, tamba kuro, tambe ro, Nigeria abo, tamba de no, no, ah, ma, we pe, ileni, le, tambe wa yo, ya to si ti Nigeria, wa te te be, eh, di, ti, wa, be, bo la ti Nigeria, wa be di sono, kamba le, wa le, kamba de, di, ah, ah, wa ni, to ma ma, she to, ileni, eh, 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 country, ji, angbesile, eh, di, eh, ni ya ta fi ne kama she programi, po ba, ye, wa, we pe ba, she, bo, ye, 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 eh, she Nigeria, la, be, padalow, the Yoruba Nigeria is not going to be a small replica of Nigeria, is going to be a totally different country. Eh, di, eh, ni ya la fi so pe, kama she, eh, eh.
Recording in progress.
Ne, eh, o se, tokoja, ah, ah, fe no ba, bobo, eh, di, eh, di, shubwa leni, ah, fe wa solo ti politics, ilay yo ba na, ah, fe wa solo ti politics, ilay yo ba, politics, ilay yo ba, ne, eh, pe, ah, eh, politics, iti Nigeria, eh, ne, pe, mofe de lo wo, mofe de lo wo, eh, mina, ah, lo ba, wa she politics, eh, ma, wo wo, lo wo, ya ma sha, wa le si di ka, abe ken, che, eh, kantam ma ma me, kavu ma mu, si pokon. Eh, 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 be, o ro ti Nigeria, she rin ni ya, eh, ba, to ba le, de be, eh, wa, to ba le, rigi wa, te te di, kiya, 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 wa, eh, tori pe, gi gi, o, wo lo wa, ni di ro Nigeria, eh, niya o, si ni o ro ti yo ba o, ni si ni ti yo ba, so, eh, ni to ba fe she politics, yo ba, ko ro nu, eh, da da o, kishé, da da ko, lo she, o, shubwa to ba lo she, o, ni le, ba di salary, eh, be o, to ba mu, kobo, koja salary, eh, ah, o, guade, o te ade ma o, you could get it there, you could even be executed for sabotaging the national economy, be ru, jobati, eh, ah, wa, ma wa fe she, from country, ti wa ni ya o, le le, tombbo, ma, eh, because eh, 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 chi va ilo gate, ba wa, she politics, now, kupo, kupo, emiti sakuru, len baton, do yurudie, eh, eh, lo, nineteen ninety, baton ko, no be me di, tamai le ti, eh, baba wa, MKO, eh, kimo turi, eh, kato mbaya le, tam kolete, asin, pe ken, wa she, eh, eh, leader, eh, committee to ma, co, cultural policy for Nigeria, morora, kero mi, mosha jadi, di jadi, ti mo de, jadi, ngba ni, twenty five years, of, eh, ni mofi wa, eh, we, mosha, pa ma, pata, pata ni, ba, ni, bo bo, ba wa ni ya ne, eh, eh, chi va ilo, genba, wa she, politics, oh, eh, tomba wa da, nura. Eh, mi na, owa sa. Eh, uga to wa ya, eh, uga to ya, to, to gi ja, eh, o na, to wa sa, so, eh, eh, iwa ma fe ko ba wa she, ala, ye na da, da, la le, she go. Eh, she, eh, she baba, eh, thanks, thanks to, to God, I was born into politics, my father was a very good, a very good member of the action group, and, eh, she fa wa lo, o, say, that boy, to ba di wasie, eh, akure, don da wa, eh, is, that boy, lo pe, baba mingda, and I thank you, so I grew up by age of eight, but in Pissaculla, as a mother of, eh, ba di, mo ba wa, you, eh, eh, YZM, eh, people, so, eh, mokbe, mokbe, minutei, minute, action group, ni nineteen fifty-five to sixty-two, le le, I'm going through it to, to see what happened the time, yeah, and, mokoa, at every moment, no ma, o, pe, ah, she pe, ah, wa ino wa ni, even people without, eh, western education, ah, wa, ba bata, anto pe, ah, Benny, when they get to parties, eh, party meetings, te ba, bo, katonso, the, the understanding of the issues, the understanding of what transpired, I mean, what has to be done, they were working selflessly to advance the cause of the people. Shubwa, kori be, eh, si, right now, if you look at politics from the prism of APC, Atikilo Rukodi, Zegop, PDP, or whatever they are, arrow, it may be politics, she ri la ti bere ni, eh, the action group was the best organized political party in Africa and other areas, but right now, that ba wa, ah, wa do wa be, they are not qualified to be called political parties, interest groups, new one, talk of, eh, ma jali, eh, do wa be, eh, 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 do wa be, o ba, do de, o ma, eh, the corruption, o ma, she, I was one of those who say, baba, ita lo, wa, ti diago, eh, do wa pe, minle, o wa, ti diago, they try to stamp the country, eh, be corruption out of the, more, o yen, more, be the wa, eh, ya, eh, ya wo, but when I got there, kota, eh, to, eh, le ti, eh, ni moti sakuru, eh, pe, me, goti mori, this man will be a problem for the country, and I gave my letter of resignation out of CPC, now, the point is, eh, background, ite, obani, kosanita, fe, fara, ma, polit, tombe, so, pe, politician, le, ya kon, ni Nigeria, le ni, lo da, wa, do wa, bito ri, eh, ni, do wa, fe, boomila, wa ta wa, YZ, eh, the politician, eh, I'm not the politician of that mode, I, I went into politics because, like, Bati, Abere activism, tache de be kon, on the street of New York, la, we, eh, ti so fu mi, pe, eh, ye le mobilize, eh, wa, ti, 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 tong ba joba, ah, ba joba, tong, esasai, I want you, eh, ta, ma, you know, wa, be, ta, ba, lo be, iba, be ta, eh, le, that was what my incursion into politics was an extension of my activism. Ah, wa na, o, be, I tried, eh, di, si, I want ah, mo, go, tong sa wa si le, itong sa, gwa si, western countries, tong wa ba joba, wa, eh, she, be pe, one more, because they suspected that these people are genuinely trying to build a nation, not to get something in their own pocket. Be. Shubwa le le, eh, di ba. And I always, eh, pe, we cannot allow them to hijack this, to di wa hijacki movement, si June twenty, they hijacked it, but they should hijack here, one of the position, kato, o, ba, te ne yo, let them come, bobo wa, omo yo ba ni wa, akbaro ko, ga du ko lo, ah, vi, to ba go ri be, eh, de, eh, so ti, ah, ma so fu, eh, pe, wa, kuti ye ni, because to ba ye, kose kato, ndro so, eh, eh, we, Nigeria, eh, o fe la contest, eh, be, so, wa, kaka, jo ina, ah, ma, we eh, you are not our leader, there are certain, there are, eh, in the, eh, in the sub-determination area today, there are organizations joining, and those organizations are growing by the day, and other things is that, two people, le man yo, la, ne, la, ni, te fa konta, we come, ah, ba wa, she pa de, eh, no, pa de eh, ah, ma maso ro, eh, kota fe, she si leni, eh, kota fe, she ni, eh, kota fe, she ni, taba de ti, taba ti, ah, gripe, eh, kota fe, she ni, ah, ba ber, si she ni, so, ki, eh, pe ke, ah, ka de, kolon, di ro, o, ji, ni na, yeah, o, eh, pe, eh, kose kato, o, sa, you pe, ko, she leader, ah, ah, mo lo wa, la ti, eh, ya to, go ti, eh, ya to, go ti, pa gumbor, mo lo wa, baba, ki to, eh, at his age, I will tell you something, niba, di ba, ba ina horo, to sakuru Nigeria, he was only seventy-nine years old, eh, mi wa, o, baba, eh, ni, bi to, yo, kosi, yo, kota, and so, eh, ba, eh, ma, wa, is very important, niba, ti, so, story, ba, ni, kato, mu, eh, mu, wo, eh, mu, ya di me, money, at your age, she tell ya, ba wa, eh, he start forties, fifties, eh, di to ba, tamba, bo, pe, eh, go one seventy, something, wa, ah, ah, ba ni eh, but he wa na, ba ti, losi, eh, kene, wa ma, so, eh, ma, ni, baba, at your age, she le, ba du ko le, te, ba je ki, eh, eh, no, to, I started ala, twenty-one, eh, twenty-ja, ba, la wa, zik, ah, ola wa, ni, bobo, eh, only but, mistakes were made, oh, na, make a mistake, only, onda la ba zik, omba wa lo, omba wa, eh, be, be, ko, pe, eh, la, olo oku, olo ku, zik, zik, no ku, olo, on the youngest, wa, no ku, and I'm trying to correct the mistake of the past, now, baba ki to, eh, is eighty-seven year, o, kishé, seventy-nine, o, ju, eh, di, timo, eh, so i pe, timo, so fu, baba ina horo, eh, ah, seventy-nine, eighty-seven, yeah, o, but you know, si, eh, but this baba, is still going around, still talking to us, and now I was explaining to him that, look, timba, we from, goti, ba fe, eh, baba ki to, eh, ma, tu, o, ma tu, gobbo, goti, be, some, ah, collect, eh, she, mu li, hand we le, from me, without bothering him, so, so, eh, ya, kawa, one si, ah, me, kino ti, eh, bo, ibo la, ba de, to mo, so, anybody coming will have to join us, ah, wa, lord, ah, ah, le le, want to ri, omo yo ba ni wa,
Then there will be laws. There will be laws that will regulate the participation in politics. We got your basic politics, our basic party. To about fair election, while I was here, do you want to talk to what? While I was in Billie Jean, while I was in constituency here. Oh, so back huh, ah, 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 paro con bagucaji. You go back to your constituency, contest election. If you win, you come to it, but now we the the national capital. You all uh assemble together and elect a prime minister. The prime minister goes out to go and nominate his ministers. Brings the names back to the uh House of Representatives and we have our government. Am I look at go go country to allow yellow political party. So okay, go go billa, uh, uh, I bet I'm a little, I want country to the political party one call. I put that that and then she democracy da da. So it political party is not a condition for democracy. I want you below way near what? To repeat, I shall want to become a divided, come, come, ah, come, ah, come, ah, come, ah, oppose one thing to the other. I want you ba, I'll rebear. Philosopher, I want can only the foundation of their own thinking is uh uh opposition, binary opposition. Uh, see, I want you ba is binary composition, I'm a composer, you want it. I'm yeah, I elect your power, tell her, you know any. She might have to my people go out, they call a journey, look at that, I elect your back, so we are pointing. A few of us, but she do you ever could you have go in there? Go by water, been better than that, my ship, I did ship, I did, it 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 it, I'm a young girl, I know what. There was no political party, there was no part into groups. My father was a. Because I'm big, good dear, I'm a day, I'm a by my colleague. Uh, but I'm glad say, uh, E K T. Uh, tiny politics, what they ah, party, I, I, my colleague delay, want join uh N C N C. I execute, I want to, uh, dad, we like, I think my sorrows equal, ah, woman, you both, I share, I saw. Uh, want to, I should treasure our uh, N C N C for something. I do. Uh, T B A B A Y O K O, to walk, I was a bad D I W A. And you let me away, she in coming, I want to, you, pay, uh, let you pay a queen, I want. See permanent time is one shot, I want forever. She in coming, I want to, you, you can find, I want to match it, do Bawa. She buy, I want to match it, do Bawa, call you, but today. And that is the truth of the matter. There are many countries in the world who reject the political parties now. In fact, political parties are becoming unpopular in the world. And there is no reason why we should go on for political, you can practice democracy without partisan politics. So in that time, I'm a one suggestion, you can. What we have to lose by having political parties is a lot bigger than what we can, we have to gain. So that's one thing. Secondly, there will be laws that guide the practice of politics. Only losing it most alike, I can't, I look contest election. For the back, what am I, I go, to Bama, who, if we, you know, can show, show. I, I want to man, say, intelligence, intelligence, uh, uh, political intelligence, I want. Tom bad grab, but I'm where, thank where, I was sick or to, to lose, you will go to jail. And then you will be banned from taking part in political, in, in elections in Yoruba land for the rest of your life. So the penalties are heavy. Thirdly, to Bawa, they, they, but, I don't know, so I told Losili job, I need, I bad now. To the, uh, remember, House of, uh, Rep- Representatives, National Assembly, what? To the, uh, the minutes or whatever. Oh, what you want, some food, I need, be sure, you know, the kind of what, oh, my, my, I bow. He said, to watch, he said, to warn you, but I would love what? To you, I could, but I would love what, for our, I would, the two, what, but no, oh, what is job, ah? Of feeling, I'm a great part of. The system will bring it with the civil service in the, in, in Af- in Africa. And they manage our affairs very well. We are going to strengthen our civil service back and give them the authority to manage the finances of our country. Under the laws. And the laws will state who can have access to money. At what point does the minister issue a check or sign a check for a project? Go go, when I love my one more. Baba, I would love, I would love see, but I'm sure, uh, international, I can say Constitutional Conference. Name, uh, name London. Baba, I would love what I want, I can, 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 I party, I love, see London, I love your Constitutional Conference. I think she minister, I, 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 my premier, I'm going. Oh, what they done done, they can, I want, I fall sick. Oh, I lost, I speak to one admit here. Oh, what, I need, I was, I lost, I speak to, oh, but yeah. Uh, and it's a commission, I, uh, uh, West Side, you know, London, I want, I pay. Oh, low one, eh, let commission, oh. They, they, West Side, you know, they London, Latin, so, oh, doctor, from Babato, see, yeah. Eh, but I, but they, I, that they Nigeria, eh, wash it to Latin, move, you know, Pada, I, I, Pada, see, a county, uh, commission. If I love, I need, okay. Oh, I need, see, we have a, I need, I go, daddy. Oh, I, I, I want politician, I want, can, 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 be to with Baba. Baba, I need, she be, or, eh, while I was sick. Or, eh, while any to sick.
I won't move you back. Eh, could you define a people young like Jackie? Eh, she may press or like Jackie left. I Jackie, me, look to today you. Eh, Jackie, do you remember? Am I, yeah, my back. If he, eh, he never say, oh, he no, but studio to one day. Kedekatetebere, question and answer, oh, I'm a Baba. Bawashen, me, pa, 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 le, he buy eh. I want my test, you add in, I'm a P, I want to do a top, who are the call it, the visa, oh, but I lost. Now, over to you, sir. And to my friend, I mean, no, eh, continue moving. You told on, no, no, well, oh, I will, you're there, bear. You're there, if I get, can you, of course, so, damn, you know.
indigenous nation in the world has a right to self determination. That right, the African Union Charter says that right is not questionable and it is inalienable. So, we are working under international laws to which Nigeria is a signatory. Nigeria is a signatory. So, Bojegeni.
Ese goni sa. Eh, number three, I see. I never felt the warning. No, I have questions that in there, no, I can't see yet. Central account, Babati was only called it. I want Baba, I do, I do. Kla wiza.
I want, I want long share, I should give me a bit of attention, she told me.
Eh, yeah, I think, I think number four, I think two, number eight, plus four, four, no, the WhatsApp. Eh, number two, plus, plus four, four, seven, four, four, zero, seven, one, five, five, four, two. Number three, my question here, eh, they were any anytime, come on solo, no, I'm a down, I do, we pay, I said, eh, sorry. Eh, my binu, ah, more, continue brother, why it on February, no, he, photo, did we pay? Eh, I want to, I know, we do, we pay, I'm afraid by, I'm afraid, very question. Photo, did we play, I'm a, I think, I'm a down, Papa. Eh, no, sao.
Eka leto.
Eka le sa, era sa.
Eh, go to, eh, go, I'm about a few days, I want. Oh, no, currently, I want to choose to solidly, you see, which is making. Me, my coach, Tony, last time, eh, I was so glad, I did, I do, it was something like, eh, or, 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 no, they show. It's about what she, last thing Tony, there was a lawyer, address the public, lawyer, come out, address the public, okay. And he gave them advice that, if they, continue, judge, you suffer, will be addressed when it be. Topa, try not to condemn, condemn the constitution of Nigeria. That shows that, we got to, we get, we got, call, allow, to call, no, we don't get, judge, go, we go, no, initiate, oh, and. If they, who are trying to, as a court proceeding, going on in Abuja.
Two fifty three, oh, attack list ah, eh, Sunday who, say, I truly there in here. Or is there any other way? See, I to my my be great, another awareness. Because, of which, you go boy, you know, Roma, near six sixty, social media, by, that one near six sixty. One very good to watch, and they phone to Android. Then two. Our Madame, so I can be. I did charge the, I did charge the crew Nigeria, but you know, she repair because top people, me, Europa. They are still into Nigerian system. We were lecture, don't bother, you see, I love top, 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 Europa people. Definitely, they are still working for this eh, eh, twenty twenty three election. So, oh, can you also, I want to enlighten, to the way, I like Charlie. About, to my, about, they try, they try to my, to somebody, come on, Charlie, you understand, I like Charlie. And I don't know how, you know, you know.
Okay. I said, go on, I just want, I just want to bless you. Now, I'm, 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 if I question, yes, you let me finish it back, only, I just can to pay, and you consider again, and do it through it alone. I just catch it back, whatever, make a question, yes, yes, so that, am I down, am I down, or not?
Definitely.
Time, time to move fair, release now, but, but if you're okay, bye.
You want you oh. I wanna my was if I be. Bobo, got to bash a lamb eh. I wanna my was so far. If it's at the couple of years. Ah, so you play sixty plus eh, be in a column ah one eh. Oh, you do man, in fact, I walk on once in land, no, Germany, I don't wait, don't support. I want to shit on that if I, oh, in which case, in another month or two, I like, we hundred. I like, we two hundred. But she ain't, but be, but she ain't die eh, be eh, left, non far away. Now, kidney eh, be eh, she eh. Tom five, I want me to get you eh, left, I mean, Latin, our organization, it's on bad day. One way, it could happen, when you your back cancel. He be eh, he be eh, they go, go eh, bet in zero. And again eh, boh, let she fair now, oh, or not, that if fair now, oh, oh, but my shala eh, you're Jackie Mamubo. Your back answer, you eh, got a bunch eh, go, go, one, no, my one eh. Go, go, I want to do, maybe, 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 eh, be, cause he got down there, so. Eh, cocky, contact eh, back, come back, bro. It will you dance, sorry, eh, be eh, I'm a fellow she eh, or eh, signature, can I, signature eh, eh, be eh. A zero, taba de ti, zero, eh. Tabatini, go, go, I for what see, majority carries the vote. Tabatini, go, go, I for what see, oh, this is she eh. The same thing. Our one year executive. The executive. One eh. Then head of each other committees automatically becomes members of the executive. If you Latin, yeah, I want, I want, I want eh, be. To forward, so what point eh, Latin, yeah, executive. Key eh, 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 our county one eh, better left eh, our loga eh, eh. Professor Akito eh, is from Milan. Your back people's forum, let me tell what. But we're walking and. We walk hand in glove. The same thing, like, what do I need accounting department, me, oh, consent, don't worry, eh, the, eh, the eh, be, but taba de be, don't allow us to put. Your ex, and it don't hurt, the accounting department has a, ha, is a lecturer in the university, has many years of experience in accounting. And I bought in Nigeria and abroad. And there are other fifteen other, there are, there are room for fifteen other, at least fifteen other in that department. To you, I go, mama, she share. And most of them, go, go, alone, yeah, accounting department, most of them have PhD, PhD, or quality matter. But you have to have the experience, you have to have the committee, where you have to have everything. Now, town eh, Bawani, the partner here, they are head. Automatically becomes a member of the executive. The same thing, head is security. And the job eh, we, they, we have room for fifteen or more in security, these are experts, both in Nigeria and around the world. They have come out, they say, eh, by, in your, can you, they will look at it, recommend to the executive, the executive will look at it, and then bring it. To the your back answer. Your back answer, yeah, no, my, oh, no, that, kidney eh, eh, a little more course. Eh, yeah, by, in the top back, see, I want your back answer, yeah. Eh, eh, my, my, me, eh, I, 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 eh, don't you, who will be me, be much, eh, sorry, what, oh, you know, eh. Eh. See. Okay, okay, alright, that's. It's alright, so.
Want you like, want you love, want you like, you know.
Okay, I know, I know. Now, taba wo, bash eh, lawyer, taba wa, me, your back answer. I want you to one eh, because he got down there, sure, what eh, they, but eh, wow, satisfy, well, you're card for what see eh, cause, oh, yeah, anyway, she eh, 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 more layer, that team boy.
And expose the person. You understand, but don't let some other people. So those are the things I want to tell you is good. Tabak pay me anytime I will be with you.
Eh she gone eh she gone, God bless you sir. Now, more to keep a bar. Oh my body walk on this. But chairman, Matt be inside. Emma, eh, what about the way they are. But I want to know why it created a no boat. So we put more than twenty five bar. Eh, oh my body walk on. Let me, Baba, my body walk two minutes. He might be Baba was chairman. Let me buy him a baby Baba wa eh, oh my Luca. Eh Baba wa Idile Marcos, Emma Mora. See there, and that cash in the fact back back.
Eh, eh, your eh my bag, we play our meta. Now, I want me a record of any pay me Nick.
Yeah, then he said.
Our better now, what doctor Abioye. Who is another there. And Othumba Seni is also one of us. So I may be any of them, eh, question anytime.
Okay, sir.
Azabi.
Yeah.
I might be no, chairman, he pay me more be the question law. Eh, one day, damn alone. So, eh, Jacky in Paris, eh, Jacky in Paris, so key. Key, the Baba Seni take them quick. La la, and what to one who flyers Baba Seni, not down question.
Oh, not down question.
Question, he be. The guest in the inside, if was like that, can be the question. Our, 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 oh, you dad, I need below me, sir. More eh, be, only say be, more eh, they why eh, sir. Eh, be why eh, say be.
My eh. Papa, Papa, look, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Eh, breaking news. Breaking news. I want come out on mineral, you're about twenty twenty two. One in the Friday. Now, eh, we're all petition ten, so we're affect to prepare the euro. New Friday, Bobo platform, pata, pata, not in my be. If you say be, back in a Baba, you log in, you know, we do pay one beer, Joe. Baba, Tilo, what Tilo rest, you must be best, be no. Eh, unique, who could bow on, bow, I passed the message. What be the question, could be, when it depress release. Keep Bobo, I you the my pay referendum, you. Or since I told you, be, come again, pay, machine, so you know, going to this question, sir. And the conny. Oh, gee, and it says, eh, Bella, eh, you pay to repeat, go, go, eh, go, do, eh, oh, come, get you back. You pay by who, she the Dallas. To what the first sponsor for her, who get to you balloon. Oh, the effect join the bank, eh, question, can he, eh, uh. Then, back in a sir. You know, contact, could do, he said. I am made low left, if you want, when younger generations, I want money to get technocrat, I want youth. Because I want, Doc, I'm calling, I don't want Baba, so that was a now. Today, we pay in content, break a leg, guys, eh, I am a guy. Are you, well, left, if you see, left, for, 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 yeah, I'm a guy, guy. Better, she saw in this, eh, I'm a lady, she, eh, I'm a little, she, yeah. Eh, oh, Shata, Bafi, homo, Baolo, she, Fashi. Baolo, you Fashi, last but not the least. Oh, we pay. Eh, I can't, it's a problem, wait, it's a sorry. Eh, let you question, see, I want you to, don't call me. Oh, because of the wall, only. Long she, eh, I want, I want, eh, I want, eh, come, sadly, I want, eh, come, eh, physically, eh, me, in the Republic. I want, can he, or is you, only, I want, can he, can he, I want, can he, Bola, did you buy my, that one year? I want, can he, dead, you, I want, can he, long, I want. More we pay, Bobo, eh, no, yeah, can, yeah, and I could do, we pay eh, eh, the lonely.
Latifio was be there, I bet I'm a verse said that red debit. Lati, I be check on in your Africa, be I want to wa l'America, I be Canada, I be car killi go goa. Balayeni beauty go go my your ruban nation wa. Check on in your Africa because originally show wa, la mani, I biti anyka kawa wa. So, ba o le she she, I mean, yes, it's a, eh, she modukwa.
Eh, she goma, God bless. Um, um, I can't read it as she, I need uh four different currencies right now. Uh, do I might increase this, see, I need Canadian dollar, US dollar, UK pound sterling and euro. So those, and then, um, the buffet, I tell you send the wall, oh, could Nira, uh HSBC one London, London, England. So, I'll see any of the HSBC branches, guess okay, they're about to, I might publish account number. They're about to be one let's say, uh, wire transfer, edit it, so it's better directly. See you by she she, I just, she, she, she pay per, no, so you pay through paper, they're about to, you know, email. I tell linky, I want account to see paper, to they're about to send you paper, oh my, oh my deposits is accounting. So, I to make it, you know, much more easier for anybody from anywhere, any currency, you know. But they're about to, you know, they're about, they're about to really more, you know, area, tea, time we over procedure. The fair currency, I may, I'll add more currencies, my, you don't have a problem at all. You know, while that is, you need to lead you, they can watch the fair first account, like you see first account. Come on, add more currencies, it's not just, can she while at all. So, yeah, it will be easier for everybody to contribute.
Eh, eh, she gone, eh, get the castle in black hole, you have to draw like that, come, eh, but I'm going to okay ma.
Hello, eh, call him out, oh, mokey go go Leo, mokey I wonder the water, I'm on me wow. Eh, John, quick one, Baba, I look for a song, I collect, I'm on the repay, I're any, I'm on two men over all, yeah. I go there, Jay, in Kotoa, very important. Lory or referendum, yeah, eh, my Jekan neglect, eh, my Jekan, for, 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 or, yeah. Ni back me, eh, Joe, eh, but was so good, I give what, kunisumo, kunirewa. Only last release press statement, Lory or, yeah, be, I want more your ruba, ta ta, oh, see Baba, one, yeah, show you wow. Ah, who, but I'm a law, was see or referendum. Message to see what we form, we don't know, yeah, I want more your ruba, in one two, Lory or referendum, yeah. Do you to pay in Kotoa man, he said, no telepath.
Tele, tele, yeah.
I could remember, so, really, that she need you, eh, eh, you can be by. Come on, by the way, what do we want, referendum, what do we want, referendum, forcing, oh, see, that, oh, well, Lory are so many people. So, by, eh, little one, bonnie, it's a good job, yeah, on, yeah, I'm trying to pay in one two, see. One concern, they're similar, beginning, normal, you play, I'll launch that special referendum. Eh, Joe, Baba, ni lasti, Baba, bossita, lasti, you can't, ah, or, yeah. More, it's a concern, Tom, eh, no, Baba, I'm a reporter, so, oh, my, she needs, ah, eh, eh, she goma.
Eh, she gone, I baba, she saw, baba, she saw, statement, test, so, if you're like, oh, Koto diwi, ke, yeah, baba, she, oh, she saw, oh, lo, we, eh. Eh, Doctor Bola, on, no, was okay, eh, Jack, I go, 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 I want to do, I know, eh, Doctor Bola, eh, go, go, okay.
Eh, she goma, I'm a, of, actually, eh, question me, love, for, Doctor, oh, yeah, I do, yeah. Most of more, she, oh, basses, or, I hope, you should bring one, you know, signatories, I be, board member, the she, she accounting. Hmm. So, should bring one, be, and I'll meet only, only sign, eh, check out.
Okay, um, I, I, at the moment, me pool of trustees, oh, be one, be. But for this account, she, uh, uh, cause so bring there, and the simple reason is, me pay. As a term of fish, won't require pay in your tuba wa on ground, me, no, the, no, your signature. But, going forward, it's not a problem, let you add more, more signatures to the account. So, yeah, there's a problem at all, she, but, and again, a little more she go. At any given time, I can step down for, in a, it's not supposed to be forever. I need to let my change hands, it's all for complete purposes, yes. There would be opportunity to add more signatures to the account, definitely.
Most of a, can be a practice, yes, eh.
Definitely, definitely.
Eh, she go. Okay, eh, Jack, eh, eh, go, go, okay, Paula, eh, go, go, okay. Eh, call it, eh, but, go, go, eh, but, I said, it's not, 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 sir.
Mufa, eh, eh, that's it, Tony, eh, call it, we go Leo. Uh, mufa, eh, Baba, Doctor, you mufa, be, the question, oh. Yeah, they, eh, they, eh, be, it wants to explain, eh, account, yeah, see. Oh, that be, oh, thank you, she explained, eh, oh, and then, oh, come back, eh, oh, come, make it to what you saw, eh. Other, eh, be, I want to, I wa la abroad, they can, eh, I want to, one leader, who see, I can't, to, I feel, that, can, eh. And it's about the senior abroad, to buy, they been in Nigeria, oh, what. They give me method, me just try, eh, see, eh, see. Me, oh, okay, I want to, I wa, I need location for one, met one, like, ah, oh, you, eh, da, who see. I be, there is any extension, to my one leader, see, I, oh, yeah, my leader, who globally, see, when they, boy, eh, and, but, I, the UK, I be, America, I be, any, or, other country. Because, eh, me, oh, Leo, eh, be, see, you have some direct account, Koto, some way, I transfer. Oh, yeah, oh, I need, talk, yeah, but, I need, eh, eh, attack, but, I need, who we. Oh, they see, why I transfer, I'll see, I can't, and, eh, we, eh. Do I, eh, eh, there is another method, they, uh, for this, so, oh. My, eh, case, be, eh, improve, oh, yeah, yes, you, eh, the processing, oh, yeah, eh, be. Direct, eh, they can, some, what's an account, eh, could, eh, correct, eh, dimension. Because, eh, new, if they, will, they work, will, they work, at all, at all, during, eh, see, oh, I, eh. Do I, eh, be, another way, method, me, what, see, eh, team, proposed, oh, the, oh, to, one, the process, it, eh, says, call it. See, oh, boom, car, oh, you, eh, it, oh, I need one dollar, two dollar, that in deposit, see, eh. See, when they, when they, money, fifty dollar, I be, forty dollars, no matter, to the deposit, I be five dollar. Oh, yeah, key method, eh, key process, eh, oh, what, at age now, the technology, what. I can't, eh, but, my, we, yeah, they, eh, see, you, but, they, they, eh, be globally, oh, see, eh. I can't, you, till you work, eh, I can't, eh, before, oh, oh, the one, we, eh, oh. Oh, yeah, eh, now, eh, I'm, eh, case, being from, ah, further, because, no, you take me, the, the, back, I can't, you, the work.
Eh, she gone, eh, she gone, you know.
Have issues, we will deal with them. But the way that my confidence will let, oh my God, see, the way they are dealing with eh problems and issues in location of I want to appreciate everybody.
I said, Goni Baba, eh job eh Baba, no, good, no, no, ah, so she was a little one, he be by. Baba, no, good, no, no, ah. So what for you, I mean?
I'm not too sure. But she want, but she need be.
Eh brother, did they get, she brother, um, um, prophet, so no, 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 ah, so what for you, I mean?
Eh, I think what we can then do, talk about see log back and magic, be sure no one. We are got the evangelist, did they give, Koba, promote see, or what he wanted to see with us?
I'm checking, I saw him earlier coming to the zoom, I just double check.
Yeah, it is, it is because of time, we are, you know more about the whole thing, like about two minutes. Promote see.
Not really, sir, if you just let me.
Okay, eh, Jack, I love see, follow, brother, did they ever me contact, eh, Jack, I love see, follow, no, what you saying? Ever me, ever me, me call, what they showing me?
In place of that, just if you let me later after the advert to play the um audio from Babak into you for that event in America, man.
Okay.
I'm looking for it a- after the adverts.
Yeah, listen, there's our engineer.
Sure.
Yeah, I see right divide.
Eh, you know, I only kept the adverts. I think it's with Lamey.
Also, we pay advert, you see, could she play nearly?
You learn request it from sync.
Now, eh, but you also see, don't read but that's basically, I did play video to Baba, and yet I made a play video to Baba.
Okay, let me try with that. I'm bringing on.
Yeah, volume. Eh, Junior, volume.
No voice. Double gadget, please, take one off.
Well, I just, brother, you people walk, I just stop, I'm a player, the real program, tabage, the real shows, I'm a player. Eh, Jack, I sorry, but last caller, he can't leave, he can't leave, I'll leave you, only man, only lawsuit, or only what they say, they say. Eh, oh, the, uh, caller, now, hello, last caller, they lay, ah, back off, come on, I'm going, go, go, I'm going. Hello, hello, she said. I mean.
Eh, forty, move first for the be contract of our team, our next year, of our ship, over, no, eh, road, see, I own the yeah, but like, any part, the market transfer, we see, eh, the, eh, the transfer, only any part, the market transfer, was only if I cook you. You're a bad artist, they live, they are money, not see, we get to be, we are not see to send it back, I can go any part, go and pay the money. Oh, why is it for what? Even though I have this, like, POS, can they see the POS also? So that they are what I want, they are not, I can't even feel, who did it, that's why, like, I can't even feel, it's not that, you know, who, who, I love what? What's move better, what you better, I'm.
Eh, she gone, you go bless you, eh, she gone, you know, eh, Baba, I did log game, oh, boy, I doctor, doctor, I boy, I'm about down, tell him I'm about down. Because very, very, oh, to come, go top, be, they let, they let, no, but, oh, that I play, it down, go, go, to, 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 more, more, fake, it, boy, I want to see, they buy. About, about what you go, it's okay, from, so.
She any part, continue, any action, sorry.
Ben, you said.
I be your money, for banking, lot of it, eh, yeah, doctor, oh, yeah, doctor, I be, oh, yeah.
Sir, yes, sir, okay, eh, eh, it's a problem, eh. My, 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 I'll make some contacts Nigeria, three, in, fear when we pay, come, I need too much fun, Nigeria. Come back, basically, that's fair, but, um, yeah, I, I actually, Laurie, I will, I want to ballet. So, and then one, one idea, and got that, let's see, to facilitate the transfer of fund from Nigeria to, to the account.
My best friend is an Igbo man. My Harry Potter.
Morning news, Konfumama, I'm Abino. I don't know long. Sorry to interrupt you. I've just received a message from a prophet. Long.
Long Luluwa.
Long. I can understand he's a little bit upset that he was among us for so long that we did not actually recognize. And I want to on behalf of everybody here, that wasn't there, I was about to doing it when I was told to, you know, wherever you are, and I'm sure I'm going to send him a personal sorry message, apology. It wasn't anything intended on this meeting tonight. If you see the large number of people with full integrity and we don't for no reason that we will have chosen to ignore him. There must be in the process of what we have been doing, we didn't get it right. So I'm sure nobody will say, why are you going to apologize to, is one of us, is one of our leaders and so on and so forth. So I hope this message you get to him on top of the one I'm going to send to him personally. I'm Abino, he should pay more, I require I call you, I call you in Kiri, have anything. You get this kind of thing sometimes when it's so many to discuss. And I promised him that I'm going to have him one on one on my program as my own donation towards the June 9th protest or whatever it is here, rally. So I'm Abino, wherever you are, actually, thank you very much, Dr. Sabi.
Okay. Yeah. Exactly, I saw a little bit, if I, other people I want, I want be, come for me, wait five minutes. No, we go go, eh, oh, I keep it on the chef who work, who I need South Africa. Eh, let me buy it, no, you're all five million. He'll tell we pay a one more, you bash out the pain, he just want me to sort it by tele, tele. Eh, Baba, look, what are they, see, on to, on to the last day, on to by the Friday, come on, more a still there, that's by you see. Alaja, me, I do, I mean, the party, any, so money for all five million. Eh, in the corner, I need the last goal, then you say, I want to the person, I need paradi, oh, Simbi by. Eh, Baba wa, oh, no, good, no, no, I know, I get you, on time, that's about apologize me, or what was like, I put you back. Anybody, I want question, 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 so I lay it, oh, no, for Alaja, over to you, man.
Shavaale, my love.
Eba wa, I'm much Alaja.
I'm older than buying, we want buying, we, that in buying, we.
You know, we say.
He's segmented to one, you know, you understand him, oh.
Tell me about, tell me, tell me about it, Lord, I do one, you tell me about it, Lord, you know, Lord.
Oh, well, you know, what, eh, Dr. Sabi was trying to run up before me, I'm on later, I think.
Well, you know.
My way, you know, pro, she have better program, I just want to know.
No, 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 sir, I, why, why don't you be that she was, sir.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll be here, yeah, okay.
Ah, ah, I'm got that she, she know, no, he said, now, I do. Eh, come, so we, Thomas, eh, coolly, she go, she go, oh, Jefoma. He say she, he have, he have, he have more evil.
She have evil, so he goes evil, she's not called, so the, yeah, we go like that.
I'm Abino, Alaja, Alaja, give me one minute, I'm Abino.
Wow, wow, let to find, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Now, I'm going, yes, I, I haven't seen you one minute, one minute.